I just, I only needed for the time.
All this meeting of the Monticello City Council. The order would you please raise and join me in reciting the pledge and remain standing as Rodney leads us in prayer. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by the nation under God, independible with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you Father for the, for the ability and the wisdom that you give and the knowledge that you've, that you've given us over the years to make decisions and to do things right for this city. Praise you for all you're going to do with us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse, here. Ms. Stevens, here. Harlan, here. Mr. Reed, here. Ms. Voege, Mr. Brock, Mr. Burris, here. Mr. Kim, here. We have a call.
Thank you. There's no one in house for public participation. Is there anyone online, Terry? Thank you. We'll move on. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims reports, claims dated June 28th, 2022 through July 11th, 2022. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes 2022. Permit report June 2022. Fire report June 2022. Police report June 2022. Treasurer's report May 31st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse, yes. Ms. Harlan, sorry, Ms. Ms. Stevens, yes.
My turn.
Ms. Harlan, yes. Mr. Reed, yes. Mr. Burris, yes. Mr. Kim, yes.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I have good news, I don't have one tonight. Moving on to new business ordinance 2022-24, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Piatt County government concerning the property located at 101 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All three ordinances tonight deal with the building improvement grant program in the Monticello Business District. So I'll kind of go over real quick the, the overall and then dive into each one as we get to it. So in 2019, City Council, Monticello Business District, part of the program allowed for the creation of building improvement grant program and funding was approved by the city in FY21 and FY22. The goal of the building improvement grant program is to assist with public private redevelopment efforts using public funds to reimburse business building owners upon completion of approved private development improvements. So this is a reimbursement program once the monies have been spent and proven they've been spent. So the first one is actually for Piatt County, the courthouse at 101 West Washington Street. They would like to replace the railing on the north and south sides of the stairs to mimic that that's around the square already. Estimated project cost is $8,875. Recommended reimbursement is 50% of the total cost up to $4,438. This year, we, we budgeted $100,000 for this program. In the first round, we spent, or earmarked approved, $13,564. That's where we are today. Last meeting, I think there was a couple came in for extensions because of you can't find material or labor or anything else. So this one is for the Piatt County courthouse.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-24, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Piatt County government concerning the property located at 101 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Proceed with Terry. Anyone? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse, yes. Ms. Stevens, yes. Ms. Harlan, yes. Mr. Reed, yes. Mr. Burris, yes. Mr. Kim, yes. Passings?
Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance 2022-25, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Paul and Terry Norman concerning the property located at 113 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to marry dedicate this is with Paul and Terry Norman at 113 West Main Street. They would like to remove and replace the rubber roof on their building, which I've been up there like most buildings downtown that is needed. The estimated project cost is $40,990. It's recommended reimbursement of 50% be allocated or spent up to $10,000. That's the cap, building improvement grant. So that is for the.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-25, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Paul and Terry Norman concerning the property located at 113 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you have comments or questions, please address them to Terry. Hearing or seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Muse, yes. Ms. Stevens, yes. Ms. Harlan, yes. Mr. Reed, yes. Mr. Burris, yes. Mr. Kim, yes. Passings?
Thank you very much. Ordinance 2022-26, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Piatt County Service Company concerning the property located at 427 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I stated earlier, this is another one for the building improvement grant program. This one's with Piatt County Service Company. Yes, that's down on Marion Street, just south of Top Flight Bridge. The owner would like to replace and improve the signage, install the new awning at the station and main entrance, paint some of the exterior and repair and improve the landscape. Estimated project cost $31,026. Again, recommended reimbursement of 50% of the cost up to $10,000.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-26, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Piatt County Service Company concerning the property located at 427 West Marion Street, Monticello, Illinois?
Moment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse, yes. Ms. Stevens, yes. Ms. Harlan, yes. Mr. Reed, yes. Mr. Burris, yes. Mr. Kim, yes. Passings?
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business audit presentation. Steve Grody, do you like to sit up at the table, please? Always happy to see you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for having MCK this year. Having missed the last two years, I missed some elections or appointments and so, so many of you are new faces, some I've seen before. And so it's nice to see everyone. I work at MCK CPAs, I'm the managing partner there. I work in Decatur. We have offices in Decatur and Monticello and Bloomington. Been there 30 years now and started working under Alan King who used to run the Monticello office. So now I work, I'm end of a partner with David Brown who is here in Monticello. And I think a lot of you guys know Joanne, his mom. So it's been nice to get to know them. So I kind of just go over some of the basics on the audit, but definitely you may have other questions at some time. Feel free to give me a call. Maura's got my contact information. Anytime, I'd be glad to take any phone calls. So our audit opinion, these financial statements are report of your year and we, our addition to it really are the first two letters or that are in there. And the first is the independent auditor's report. That report for many years has been the same. And again, this year it is the same in substance. However, this year, if you took last year's audit report and laid it next to it, and the ordering of things has changed because auditing standards changed. I don't know why, but they did. But the gist of it is the same. We stayed in there that except for the fact that the city does not have an actuarial computation of the effects of the fact that you allow retirees to remain on your health insurance and the things having, or the things having to do with the, some of the police payments you make and such. You could go out and they, they think you should go out and have somebody figure out how much it's going to cost you for the remainder of the city's life to pay those things. It's a crazy thing, very complex. Most entities of your size and smaller, even some bigger, don't choose to do this. It would be very costly. And so the city has chosen not to. So what we state in this report is that has not been done. Instead, we have a shortened paragraph that just says, hey, there's this many people taking advantage of that or that are being paid that at this time. Besides that, we state that all figures as shown are reasonably presented in all material respects. So go to some numbers here. We'll start on page seven if you have your audit with you. Statement of, the statement of net position shows, it's on the modified cash basis. So what it shows, it shows cash and investments as well as capital assets, so land, buildings and such that are being depreciated. It shows those as total assets and under liabilities, it has a few things. It has long-term debt mainly. It does have a few other things like customer deposits from the water escrow fund. So to look at these, just wanted to go over them really quick. Total assets for the year is, at the end of the year was 39 million. That is up 1.2 million from the year before. Looking at the subcategories above, cash and investments is up 1.8 million versus last year. And capital assets was down about 0.6 million. And why that is, is because you have quite a bit of depreciation that is shown here, just the standard marking down of assets as over time. And you had more depreciation than you added new assets. So that's the reason. So 1.2 million up. Current liabilities was similar to last year. And then long-term liabilities were down about 0.7 million, 700,000. And that's just because of debt payments made during 2021. So overall, the net position on this statement, on the statement of net position is up 1.9 million from last year. So a positive, sure. If you want to turn over to page 11. Page 11 is going to be one that looks a little more familiar to you. This is, however you want to call it, income statement, profit and loss. It's, it's revenue minus expenditures and that's going to, and that's on the cash basis, again, modified cash basis. So this one's going to make a little more sense and look like what you normally see. Total revenue for the year is up 1.9 million from 2020. Some of the categories, the big one, of course, was personal property replacement tax from the state. That was up nearly a million dollars in 2021 over 2020. Some other items that were up, recreation revenue, that was up simply because of the fact that the year before had been COVID and you had a lot of, really didn't have any programs revenue. So the other two items that went up is property taxes and sales taxes did go up somewhere around 8% each. So 1.9 million on revenue. Total expenditures were up a million dollars over the year before. Those were kind of just incremental increases in the different categories, including parks and recreation because again, you had more, you had lifeguards again, you had park, just more, more workers that were getting paid out of the rec. Also, there was a little bit more capital outlay this year, which are items that are not capitalized. So smaller purchases that you guys categorize as capital outlay, but maybe isn't going to be something we need to depreciate under accounting rules. So you get down to the excess over revenue, revenues over expenditures of 900,000. And then you did have one loan last year, which was the 270,000 that was for the truck and the trench burner. So that brings the total overall net change in fund balances to about 1.15 million. So again, positive numbers on these reports are good, definitely good. Let's go up page 14 as well. This one is going to, I'm sorry, I need to go back to, I won't, you don't have to go back, but 11 was all of the governmental fund types. But the government, the general fund and the special revenue funds. Over here on 14, we're going to see what we call the proprietary funds or business type funds, which is waterworks and sewage. For these, revenue was up 144,000, which is simply another year in, in the sewer rate. Expenditures were actually down about 71,000 and that was mainly due to there being less capital improvements that here that were not capitalized. Under non-operating revenues down there at the bottom, those are really similar to this, to last year. So overall, $209,000 increase in net position. The other things I wanted, so that's, that's the statements. You can go in more detail if you'd like. In the back pages, we have some budget versus actual, if you'd like to look at those. But I'm not going to go over those tonight to keep it shorter. Some note disclosures to note on note five, which starts on page 29. This is going to summarize the city's participation in the IMRF fund. And I think it's very interesting this year to look at page 31 and see where this stood at, at December 31 of 2021. The regular fund for IMRF, again, this is the thing where they say they have these actuaries, these really smart, intelligent math people, figure out what it's going to cost the city forever in, in the near future and such, but as of today, to pay all of the people that will get IMRF. They compute that at 10 million. But the actual funds that IMRF is holding right now or at year end in this name of the city was almost one, almost 12 million. So it's 118% invested. A lot of you weren't on the council back then, but there were times six to eight years ago where there was panic because this fund was still underfunded, you know, 75% funded, 72% funded. But luckily with the stock market, they got smarter in the way they invested. They made you guys pay more over those years when they had those deficits. And so all of that combined brought it back up. I'm not sure where it stands today. I'm sure with the market decline, it's still probably above 100%. And then you'll see on the SLEP, which is the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Personnel side of the IMRF fund, it's at 87%. And last year, that was at 75%. So good increases. That makes you feel better about where it stands and for the employees of the city. It makes them feel comfortable that when they do retire, there's going to be money there. Again, we were all worried about a lot of the state's programs 10, 15 years ago. So they've done much better with the handling of the money for these. Note six, speaking of pensions, is the police pension fund. So similarly, the police pension fund of the City of Monticello has been underfunded, under 100% over the years. And so we don't yet have, I don't think you, you still haven't received the 2021 actuary report. But we put in here the note, the numbers from the 2020. And so if you look on page 32, you will see that at the end of the year, there was 35%. It was 35% funded. That was better than the year before, but still pretty low. But some things to note is that for the 2020 year, right after that, the city did do an additional payment that helped out. And, and kind of, hey, we're going to, we have some extra cash. We're going to, you guys are familiar with this, but put in the extra money. And then again, here in March 2022, an additional 250,000, so 220 and 250. So that should keep improving. It will take some time, but that's where that stands as well. Finally, I won't go over it, but note eight that starts on page 32 lists all the debt of the city. Something decent to look at. You can see, you can see what, when, when things are due, payments get bigger and things like that. I did notice, and I can't remember which page it was on, but I did notice that having refinanced that debt really helped out. Your, your, in your interest expense cut in half on that. So that was a very good idea. Finally, we do issue an additional letter, which you should have received, which is simply what I'm doing tonight, just kind of telling you what we do as auditors, what the things are that were important, that we, we think are important. And I have highlighted those tonight. So that's it. I mean, it's nice to give a report of a, of a local government that's got some strong figures and, and a, a nice place to visit. So you guys have any questions for me at this time? Okay. Well, I appreciate it. For sure. We will be sending out our audit proposal for this next year and we sure hope to have your consideration. So thank you. And by the way, Maura does a great job. I just need to add that in. So.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
You are welcome.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate your time. Okay. Alderman's reports. Let's start with Rodney.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Michael.
Just want to thank Pam for her service over the years, city and, and then with city council, we wish her the best.
I think it was mayor, Pam?
Can talk.
She's laughing.
Driving here this evening, I guess I thought that. I don't know if I made a change in the city at, for any major issue, but being here and doing this made a change in me. So thank you for letting me do it. And yeah, so thanks a lot.
Tammy? Don't cry, Tammy. It's okay.
I have nothing tonight.
Ashley?
I just would like to say thank you to the Monticello Police Department and all the first responders that were out at the 3rd of July, especially afterwards, because the traffic trying to get out of there is always so crazy with people walking on both sides of the street. And I heard multiple officers, you know, in a very kind way, getting on people who were, you know, pushing strollers of kids down that road and their cars, you know, and saying, hey, please get over. We don't, we don't want your kids getting hit, you know? So I just really thought that was great that they were really on it with that. So thank you. That's it.
Police chief's report. It's lieutenant tonight. Thief's gone. Terry? Wow. Fire chief's report, John Rupke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a lot, so I'll make up for him.
I figured.
We made 25 calls in June, which is, it's not a little bit, but we had some excellent training. First week, we did water rescue training. We went over to the Monticello pool and had the lifeguards and all the firefighters got in their bathing suits and went to the pool. And the lifeguards taught us how to pull somebody out of the pool and get them up on the backboards and get them out of the water and such. It was pretty interesting training. So it was a lot of fun. The second week, we went to BEMET, a lot of different departments. And Amrin came out and did electric safety class. And if you've ever seen that class, he brings out this display as about as long as two tables with power poles and transformers and he burns up hot dogs and lights up plastic birds and it's about a three hour class. I'll tell you, you don't want, scared the heck out of all of us. So if you see a down wire, stay far away from it. We'll send the police in to check it out. So we appreciate Amrin coming out and doing that for, for all the departments in Piatt County. We had a dryer fire on High Street on June 6th. And thank you to Officer Schumacher. He came rescuing with a garden hose and put some water on it for a while until we got there. It burned up a room a little bit. We got there, we put it out and dragged the dryer outside. Pretty much that was, smoked the house pretty good, but I think Officer Schumacher got a taste of the smoke, so like, yeah, without an airbag, yeah, I don't think he was pleased, but we appreciate what he did. So thank you to him. We did a lot of events in June. We, Officer Vogelzang or Chair Vogelzang is heading a committee to improve the radio communication within Piatt County. Right now, we have two repeaters, one in Monticello, one in Mansfield, and they really don't cover Piatt County very well. And what that means is when we're close by, we can hear each other on the radio. When we're far away, we cannot. And you need these repeaters. So we're working with a company to get a grant, hopefully through Rodney Davis, now that he's not going to be reelected. I don't know how that's going to happen, but to put four more repeaters throughout Piatt County. The west side of the county is pretty barren. So as the farther you get west, the harder it is to, to hear people from long distances. So when different departments are coming in to, to a scene and affects the police too, it's very difficult to hear on the radio. So we're trying to get some, so he's working on a committee to, to help improve that. And we're a part of that, of course. We were on Eli Field on June 8th through 11th, fell in the tanks up there. We, we put in about 10,000 gallons of water in there, different, they have a RC boat pond that they do RC boats, they do the cars, they do all sorts of stuff out there. So it's pretty neat. We were on the square movie night, which is always fun. Also, there's a, Piatt County's doing a, Piatt County has a emergency mitigation plan and they do this every couple of years where they get all the different departments within Piatt County and they come up with a mitigation plan or an emergency plan for, to get all the departments, the cities involved, of course, and all the different townships to come up with a plan in case there's a critical emergency within our areas, a plan to work together to do that. So then we meet every quarter and it's a process to get this thing written out. We did, we did pump testing on all our engines this, this past, this past month. St. Paul Mina had Vacation Bible School and Mont Senior Bliss asked us to come out and as they were having a water fight with water guns, we were squirting water on top of them. Had a blast with that. So that was a lot of fun. And then we did an evacuation drill. We were part of the evacuation drill in Piatt County nursing home this, this past month. So we're pretty busy with a lot of different activities and, and always glad to do it. So.
Thank you, John. Very good. Thank you. City administrator report. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Rupke mentioned the radios and multiple departments. And the mitigation plan, yeah, we, the City of Monticello Police and Fire, Public Works Department have a lot of equipment, labor and all. So we're glad to be part of that program. John, Chief Rupke mentioned the fire department, the lifeguards. That is huge for the fire department and the lifeguards to know what each other kind of does, you know, what the lifeguard does before the fire department, what the fire department's going to do. I was just talking to the pool manager and there was two drowning rescues for a 16-year-old individual last week. 16-year-old and he'd been in the pool and couldn't swim twice in one day. So now that's a, that's a full grown individual that one of those 16, 17, 18-year-old lifeguards is diving in and rescuing. So they do have a job down there and he does have a job training, those lifeguards. Because it's, it can be a serious situation in Harvey. And then last but not least, Pam, thank you for all of your efforts through the years. I enjoyed having you on council. Best of luck in your next chapter or two, three or four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
That's it? At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing real estate purchase or lease. Five ILCS 120 slash two C5. Is there a motion to go into executive or closed session?
Moment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, here.
Ms. Stevens.
Sorry, I remember what you had to say.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris. Mr. Kim.
Yes.
Speak up, I can't hear you.
I have no action.
Oh, yes, there will be no action at the conclusion, so the press can go home and see. Okay, we're back in open session. On behalf of myself and other members of the council, once again, thanks Pam for all that you've done.
Thank you.
As a clerk and a, and a city council member and a, and a music booster, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you do well wherever you go. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you on the 25th.